Welcome to the Clear Lake Planning Commission meeting for the city of Clear Lake, Monday, December eighteenth. Thank you all for viewing tonight's special planning commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at the city of Clear Lake Chambers on Monday, December eighteenth at five P M. As a reminder, if you are on a Zoom meeting as a participant, please put yourself on mute unless you are speaking. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County Peg TV livestream YouTube channel. To begin with, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Smalley. Commissioner English.
I'm present.
Commissioner Coker.
Present.
Vice Chair Stewart.
Here.
Chair Williams.
Here. Okay, to those pleasant present, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Vice Chair Terry, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, city manager or our senior planner, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No modifications.
Uh, do I have a motion to adopt the agendas presented?
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 And the agenda is adopted. Okay, public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the planning commission on any matter not on the agenda. That is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the commission or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The commission cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Are there any public comments in the chamber? Okay, seeing none, uh, do we have any by phone or via Zoom?
There are none.
Thank you. Okay. Then at this time, uh, we will go to our public hearing. Item number one. The planning commission is being asked to consider subdivision development S D two thousand twenty-two dash zero one and corresponding environmental analysis, SEQA IS two thousand twenty-two dash zero eight to allow the subdividing of a thirty acre parcel into twenty-two residential lots located at two eight nine zero old highway fifty-three, further described as assessor's parcel number zero one zero zero four eight dash eight. Staff, uh, can we please have our staff report?
Yes, you may. Give me. Give me one second and I'll pull it up for screen share. Alright, so we're here at A A to hear the Danco subdivision, which is located at two eight nine zero old highway fifty-three. Um, also A P N zero one zero zero four eight zero eight. So this is more of just a location map, the stars where the project is. Down here, you know, we have where the Burns Valley project will be. The Safeway Shopping Center over in this area. So the project is rural residential for the zoning, it's approximately thirty acres in size, it will be served by Highlands Water. And then the environmental health will be providing septic for this project. So project summary and history is for a twenty-two lot subdivision, this will be for market rate residential development. Each lot size will be about one point two five acres, which is the minimum for the rural residential zoning district, up to two and a half acres in size. There will be two access ways, um, right now they're referred to maps, I rethink A and B on the map. One's approximately six hundred feet in length, give or take a little bit, and the other ones, I think almost about eight hundred feet in length. Um, as I previously previously mentioned, it will be for Highlands Water and each, uh, septic, or each slot will have its own septic. So this is the current proposal. You can see here's one of the access routes going up to the twenty-two lots, and then there's a lower one off of Old Highway fifty-three as well. So the building pads, you see the squares, then the dotted outlines on the map are tentative areas where the houses will be and or septic locations. Um, depending on once it gets to the building permit, uh, process. So this is the previous subdivision, um, that was done in two thousand and six that was approved, you can see that it's very similar in design, shape, and lot size. The only, um, the current developer made slight modifications, you know, on the shape of each lots and to meet to for today's requirements. So for project circulation, um, the project was circulated to various, um, local, federal, and state for agency comments. I believe they had up to January thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three to submit comments. Um, A B fifty-two consultation that was sent out on, um, December nineteenth and twentieth, which A B fifty-two allows up to thirty days for tribal consultation. And we met with the tribes, um, on two occasions, and then ultimately closed tribal consultation without agreement. For SEQA and environmental analysis, um, staff did a mitigated negative declaration with the incorporated mitigation measures, and that was circulated for review for thirty days. Um, actually a little longer than thirty days to make sure, you know, agencies have adequate time. We received some comments, um, from like the State Water Resource Control Board, which had their generic comments, we received one from the Coy Nation, the Sierra Club, um, the Lake County Assessor's Office, the Lake County Special Districts, which had no concerns, and then I believe Highlands Water District. So some of the general concerns that came up during this project process was oak tree removal, biological resources, septic and setbacks, and in discussions with Lake County Environmental Health and looking on their website for intermittent streams, it's twenty feet for piped and fifty feet for un-piped. And then five feet from the property lines, the tree removal. You know, the project will require some trees re-removed, um, the applicant will have to do a tree preservation plan prior to removing those and also secure a oak tree removal permit and either replace those at the appropriate ratio, or in lieu of replacing them, they're able to pay the required fee of per tree, which I believe right now is six hundred dollars per tree removed. Um, biological resources, um, you know, there is an intermittent stream in the back, and there was some concerns regarding the bumblebee and a couple other, um, sensitive species. So prior to any development, the applicant will have to coordinate with a qualified biologist to do a pre-survey during a specific time of year, um, like some of them are fourteen days prior to development. Others are shorter to ensure that those species won't be impacted. Then drainage and erosion, there's some general concerns regarding that, you know, the applicant will have to secure a grading permit and then also a storm water pollution prevention plan, since they'll be, if they disturb one acre or greater. So the publicing noticing, it was public at least ten days prior to this hearing. It was published in the Lake County Record B on December seventh of two thousand twenty-three. And it was also mailed to the surrounding parcels within three hundred feet, and then all addresses are drawn from the Lake County Assessor's database, which is an electronic database. So for options, we can adopt resolution P C two zero two three dash oh seven or deny resolution P C two zero two three dash oh seven, or provide alter alternate direction to staff. So that that concludes my my brief summary, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you can, um, any or any questions I can, thank you.
Great, thank you, um, I'll now ask each commissioner if they have any questions of staff on this item, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Inglis.
I have a few, um, first of all, the A P N number seems incorrect, the one that you gave was eight, and this is eighty at the end.
Should be eight.
It should be eight.
Yes.
Okay, so that's incorrect on there, alright. Um, the septic versus sewer, is there, is it, was it just an obvious, uh, leech field thing, a cost thing, or why?
When special districts commented, they said it's outside their district area, and then that they had no concerns regarding the project, they're they're too far to make it feasibly to connect.
I assumed it was something like that, but I didn't ask that earlier. Um, and I had questions about home building and maybe selling tranches, you know, how's that gonna work? If 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 the project is successful, then obviously there won't be a problem with that, but is there gonna be like a how 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 are we gonna see these sold, what order, what are they gonna be built, what are they gonna be sold?
I would, uh, hold off and, um, ask, go ahead and have the developer address that maybe.
Okay, is the developer present?
Yeah, he, they're on Zoom, the team's on Zoom.
And we can get to that, thank you. Uh, I think you answered the other, the other questions.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner, um, Smalley.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Coker?
I have no questions.
Vice Chair Stewart?
I have a few questions which I think the developer could best answer at the appropriate time.
Thank you, um, I also have some questions, uh, for the developer, so, um, at this time, I will open up this item for public comment. Um, are there any public comments on this agenda item, would the applicant like to share any comments with the commission?
Just promoting them as panelists, I think, um, they should be, uh, ready to go soon, uh, Chris?
Yeah, good, can you hear me okay?
A little bit too good, let's see. Alright, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, hi, good evening, um, uh, my name is Chris Start, the President, Danco Communities. We are the developers of this project, um, thanks for having us and considering this evening. I think the, um, question was, um, I don't really have a formal presentation, I was just gonna, uh, a- answer any questions that you had. I heard one question was about the timing, um, of the sale, so I can start with that one on the schedule, um, so pending, uh, this approval, um, we would immediately go into uh, developing the improvement plans with our, our, um, design professionals, our engineers that would go into further detail of, uh, improvement plans for the roads, water, uh, electricity, infrastructure. So that would happen, um, and I anticipate that would happen over the first and second quarter of two thousand twenty-four, we'd be putting those plans together and working with the, uh, city of, uh, Clear Lake for, to procure the proper grading permits. And then we would work the construction of the roads, infrastructures, if all we're able to permit it in that timeframe, we could begin that in the really the building summer season of two thousand twenty-four coming up, um, and then we could I would anticipate, you know, if we were able to get going in, you know, June, early June, that we could complete that in the, in the one building season, um, it's just really two roads that come in and um, and I anticipate we could get that done in two thousand twenty-four, which would position us to be able to, uh, final our maps in late two thousand twenty-four, early two thousand twenty-five. Um, and then we could apply for the public reports from the Department of Real Estate, following that, um, the completion of those and the and the recording of the final map. And then, um, we would be able to, you know, start building homes and advertising lot sales in two thousand twenty-five, summer two thousand twenty-five, and so our plan would be, I I'm anticipating that these will be, these types of homes will be like ranch style homes. Excuse me, like large subdivision, uh, lots and, um, ranch style, probably a little bigger homes and starter homes. And, you know, two thousand square foot and larger likely, um, well, I would anticipate that there will be some lot sales. So we'll offer the lots for sale, as well as, um, start building, um, ourselves, the Danco team will build homes. Some likely will be custom homes, and then we would anticipate there will also be spec homes. Um, our typical method is, you know, it'll be market driven, so we'll do, we'll build, if we're building them, we'll build two at a time. Um, and then when one sells, we'll start another, um, and that's traditionally how we've, how we've done it, I mean, we're we do, um, think that this market's, uh, it's different, um, and and that it's it's somewhat rare. And so we're anticipating that, um, you know, that that it'll go we're we're hoping it'll go relatively fast, and we'll be able to continue to just keep on building out there, but the market will determine that. Um, and so that's, that's, I think that's all I have to say about that. I'm here to answer any more questions. The chamber's muted, it's I can't hear anything.
Okay, thank you, we'll, um, have the commissioners ask more questions in a little bit, so thank you. Um, is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak on this item? If so, please come forward to the podium and tell us your name and, uh, where you're from, thank you.
Okay, looks like it's on, uh, hi, my name is Deb Sally, and I am a resident of Burns Valley, and I'm also the chair of the Sierra Club Lake Group. I submitted a letter, and hopefully you all saw that, so I'm gonna try to keep this brief tonight. And let me start by saying that the Sierra Club is in favor of infill within city boundaries, so that's just fits that. I also realize that building some higher-end houses to attract professionals is needed in our city. But I have four main concerns that I want to highlight tonight, and the developer kind of addressed one of them, but, uh, I would like to s- have them address before approving a plan for the development. The northern seven lots cross and include a seasonal creek, or they call it an intermittent drainage, that eventually empties into Clear Lake. Although there are setbacks for the construction phase, there is no protection available for what happens once the individual homeowners occupy the lots. It is inevitable that increased erosion and sediment runoff, as well as fertilizer and chemical use by the homeowners, will result in these things eventually entering Clear Lake at the mouth of Burns Valley Creek. That will add to the degradation in the quality of the water in that area, some of which provides water to residents via Golden State Water Company. Austin Park is in the hub of our city, having a healthy, beautiful lake there supports a thriving tourist attraction. In order to avoid adding to the water quality problems, we request that the lot lines be altered, removing the waterway from all of them. This would likely reduce the number of lots to maintain the minimum acreage. There is no guarantee that that Danco will actually build out any particular number of lots, which is what they were addressing there. And my concern is, is that we've all seen paper subdivisions and things that get partially developed, and it would just be a concern to me that we would cut down a bunch of oak trees and, uh, disturb the serenity of the meadow out there, and then have not a whole lot happen with it. And if it does go forward the way the developer is suggesting, then my request would be that we would at least try to develop the lots that don't incorporate that intermittent stream, um, as part of the first things that are getting developed and sold, so we can try to preserve that waterway to have the quality of the water in Clear Lake. The third thing is the loss of the mature oak trees, which was also addressed to some degree, uh, there is our ordinance there, but six hundred dollars doesn't really begin to cover the value of each of the large trees, which are the only ones that are of real concern in that area. And the other problem that we've seen historically is that there's not really a good place to mitigate these cutting down of the trees, because we don't have any place in the city of Clear Lake where we can really plant them, have them maintained, and, you know, more people really want to see them, and I don't think the developer will be able to do that in a way that will allow for their, uh, longevity in that development, because they would have to be, once again, on people's private property, and it would be up to the individual homeowners to keep them going. And then the fourth is the biologic resources, resource assessment, and I just do hope that we follow the recommendations and that those results be available to all of the, uh, homeowners, the residents of Clear Lake, so that we can make sure that all things that we can try to prevent having, uh, you know, losing their habitat in that area is is looked after. And I sincerely hope that the planning commission and the city council members take the city's general plan goals and objectives that were noted in my letter uh, seriously, and strive to maintain the beauty of our city and the health of our lake and ecosystems, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber for public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Dave Hughes, and I also live in Burns Valley, just down the block from the subdivision. I was kinda hoping we'd let you guys ask your questions, and it might answer some of mine, um. And, I mean, can we have the commission ask their questions, and then maybe I won't even have to say anything? I don't know.
We can do that, um, after we'll check and see if there's anyone on Zoom.
Yeah, if that's okay, I'd like to reserve the right to come back after you guys, thanks.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not.
And did we receive, uh, any emails or written comments?
We did not.
We did not, okay, thank you.
Wait, there was a hand raise on Zoom for a second, but now it disappeared, Mr. Chisholm, are you wanting to speak?
Guess not.
Okay, alright, um, then at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask our commissioners, um, if they would like to ask, uh, the builder any questions, so I will start with Commissioner Inglis.
I don't have further questions now.
Thank you, Commissioner Smalley.
So the one question I'd wanna really ask that would, uh, maybe help solve some of her issues is, you know, um, when the sweat comes in, the storm water control plans, things like that should take in count of all the issues of that creek and what's gonna happen with that storm water and everything else, cuz you can't just flow it off anywhere, um, so that's all, that's all I'd have to say.
Oh, if I, Madam Chair, if I could address, I mean, I know we've talked to, um, Deb a few times about this, I mean, her concern is is less about what the developer's going to do in that regard and what happens after that, and, you know, it's, we have very limited control, um. You know, once that happens, I mean, anyone who has furniture um, on a creek can use pesticides and do other stuff without us knowing, um, it just kind of becomes a code enforcement problem um, after that, so just wanted to explain that to the commission, I mean, I know Ms. Sally is is concerned about any impacts to it, but largely they center about what happens later, and I'm I'm not sure, you know, how much we can do about that, other than be somewhat reactive if if there's an issue.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Coker?
I have no questions.
Uh, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yeah, so, pardon me, I have a few questions for the, uh, developer. Um, does the project include curb gutter and sidewalks?
Well, no, it does not.
Thank you. Um, does the project include street lighting?
Um, Flynn, our engineer is on, can you unmute and address that, Flynn, I don't recall?
Uh, we've had that discussion, we said that we weren't gonna put in any streetlights in.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is the power supply for the individual, uh, homes going to be underground in the project or overhead?
Uh, underground.
Thank you. Um. Are you going to have on the lots that you folks do not build on? Uh, so I'm referring to vacant lots that you'd be selling to folks to build their own homes. Are you planning on having any C C and Rs that would dictate or at least give guidance on the type of construction that we might be looking at there to where there would be, uh, either some continuity, e- even if not particularly with the the new homes that are already there, but with the, uh, the overall neighborhood, it's a rural neighborhood, there's a lot of ranch style homes. And, uh, so I'm curious about that.
Yes, that that would be our intention is to, um, develop some C C and Rs, not not nothing majorly complicated, but at least to keep some consistency um, on the the building types and the and the development, typically we put together an architectural review committee as part of those C C and Rs, so that until the subdivision's built out, we would be able to have a say on, um, you know, the houses that are being, uh, proposed to ensure the consistency. Um, so yes, our intention would be is to develop some C C and Rs.
I'm wondering if it might be possible to put some sort of, a- and this is a question, since I'm not a title company person, and I don't know the ins and outs of title law, wondering if it might be able to put, be possible to put uh, say, some kind of a deeded easement or deeded restrictions in to each individual deed restricting what type of activity could take place within how many feet of the waterway?
I'm I'm not sure about that, um, I don't know if that's allowed, if that's legal.
Yeah, I I have no idea either, I'm just trying to think of ways that might, um, alleviate some of the concerns voiced by the Sierra Club representative. And, uh, I think the last thing is on the spec houses that you're going to build, and I know since they're two years away, basically, at this point, it's probably hard to say, but do you have any anticipation of what the sales price might be of those initial spec homes, what range? I'd say, even if you could say within a hundred thousand bucks, one way or the other.
Uh, yeah.
I know.
You know, I I guess I I would think that they'll be five hundred plus, if that's helpful.
That's reasonable, I appreciate that. Thank you, that's all I have.
I was gonna offer to, um, I don't know, Flynn, is there anything you can speak to as as the question that arises around the, um, storm drainage and, uh, um, methods that we're putting in place to alleviate, you know, runoff, um, I know that we have a design there that's that takes into that account, um, for post, post-development, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I can speak to that, uh, right now, we have design for each roadway, drainage ditches on each side. Um, that would drain to, speaking of Public Works, they recommended that we put in, um, uh, separators to separate contaminant. separators to separate contaminants before flowing into the drainage ditch in front of the property, which would then flow into the intermittent drainage course. So there we are planning treatment.
So we will be treating the stormwater prior to flowing into the drainage way as part of our design. Thank you.
I do have one other question, if you'll pardon me. I didn't think of this earlier. During the construction phase of the project, particularly where ground disturbance is going to be involved, do you, as the developers, plan to have cultural consultants on hand during that phase? Or is it just a situation where if your contractors that are moving dirt encounter something, then those consultants will be notified?
Well, I think there's, we've, that's been addressed in the conditions of approval and we intend to follow those guidelines. I think there are some instances where that is required and then others where it is not.
Thank you.
If you want staff to address that in more detail, we can, but.
Would you like to go ahead and?
Well, I mean, I think there's four lots that would require monitoring during ground disturbance. And then, you know, according to the information that was presented to the city through consultation as well as in Dr. White's report, there's, there's nothing of significance under CEQA on the rest of the project that would require any additional mitigation measures other than, you know, what our standard ones are, which cover inadvertent discoveries. Of course, there's cultural sensitivity training before the project starts and that type of things.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I did have one concern that I had voiced, and that is the infrastructure and which lots you will be starting with. If the market happened to turn around and things weren't selling, we're going to have empty roadways out there going to lots in what once was, you know, a nice meadow. Is there a contingency plan if lots don't sell or houses don't get built? Do you have a timeframe for all of that?
Yeah, I mean, we, Mark and I were discussing a plan, a potential phasing. So instead of building both of the cul-de-sacs at one time, that we would construct one only and then let, you know, get the infrastructure in for the one and then let the market build out. And then as the momentum goes, then we would, we would start the other roadway. Which one we would start with, I don't know that we've thought that through completely. But there's a thought there that rather than, you know, open up both, both areas, only open one at a time, let the market play itself out and then continue on as that progresses. Does that answer the question?
That absolutely answers my question. Thank you very much. So, okay. Any other questions from the commissions? Okay. Thank you for your answers. We appreciate it. Dave, did you have?
Chair Williams, we also have one hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Dave Hughes again. On the, I think on the vacant lot, I guess I was going to suggest, and I don't, maybe they've already thought of it, on the lots that they sell, that sounds like they're going to do CCNRs, maybe a minimum square footage of a home. And again, maybe the roof pitch, just to maintain some of the architectural integrity of the neighborhood. You know, you'd hate to see it. They build a 1,800 square foot house and sell a lot and there's a thousand square foot two-bedroom there. I mean, I think consistency in the neighborhood, I mean, I was thinking minimum of 1,500 square feet or something. And maybe a few other architectural suggestions in the CCNRs. And I don't, I was wondering about the creek thing. I mean, I think it was suggested they take them out of the lots. I, I think they would add value to some properties. We have a lot of properties that are joined that same drainage or creek, you know, all the way down to Clear Lake. And I think it's up to the property owners to be responsible property owners. You know, that may be something you can throw in to the CCNRs about, you know, not damming the creek or, you know, some of those types of things. I don't know. And then the thought of one street at a time. While I understand maybe a vacant street sitting there, there might be some attractiveness to some of the lots with the oak trees on them versus some of the lots that don't have any oak trees on them. And maybe somebody would prefer the one with no oak trees. I know they're a real pain in the butt right now, especially if you have a swimming pool. So anyway, I would encourage them to do both, but I don't see a problem doing one at a time. But again, there may be some attractiveness to some lots with trees versus some lots with no trees. So anyways, I think that kind of covers everything I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. And I believe that there is a hand raised on Zoom?
Correct.
You may speak, Holly.
Can you hear us at this point?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Actually, not Holly Robertson. This is Bill Chisholm. I represent the Koi Nation. And I'm sorry, earlier with the comment, we were having some issues unmooting. We did have some concerns with this project that we have addressed through various submissions. Most recently, our December 5th letter, which is included within your packet. And we certainly want to reiterate those and make sure that that, as well as the information submitted through our consultations is included within the record. Most significantly, we certainly do not oppose the idea of this project. And we appreciate and thank Danco for their work with the tribe and trying to make this a good project that is good for the community and is well respectful of the tribe and its ancestors. Specifically though, with some comments that were just reiterated by the city manager, we strongly believe there are unmitigated impacts by the project as it currently exists. Since even the initial analysis, there were additional items of tribal cultural resources that were discovered outside the areas designated by the archaeologist Dr. White. Those have not been addressed and there needs to be mitigation measures to account for not just the sites that identified by Dr. White, but mitigation in the project site in general. It's part of a rich area that's been used since time immemorial by tribes, season by season, different places within the whole project. And these are things that are just not addressed by the current MND. That must be addressed, both to comply with CEQA and, you know, more broadly, to have a good project that complies with CEQA and is good for the community. We applaud what the Danco has done. Our understanding is that Danco has agreed as the project developer to support and pay for tribal monitoring, to work with us as to tribal protocols, mitigation monitoring protocols, all of which will make a better project, will not cost the city. And we strongly assert that before this project is approved, there needs to be consultation with the tribe. There needs to be modifications to the mitigation measures to account for these newly discovered resources and to account for the impacts to them and to develop appropriate mitigation protocols. This can be certainly a win-win for everyone. The project can go forward. The project developer is willing to pay for it, incorporate the measures, the city, the community will benefit. And it can be done in a way that's respectful of both the tribe and its ancestors. But as it's presently stated through the mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, it is not doing that. And that unfortunately is a problem.
Okay, thank you for that. Vice Chair Stewart has a question for you.
The speaker on Zoom, and I'm sorry I don't recall your name, but I appreciate your presentation on behalf of the Koi Nation. What I would like to hear specifically from you and then from the developer, I'd like to hear exactly what it is that you're asking be done that is not currently showing in the documents that we have as going to be done. And I would like to hear from the developer if that's within their ability to do what you would like to have done and still proceed with this project. Is that something you could reasonably explain?
Yes. Yeah, there are two aspects of that. On a broader level, there are two things that need to be done in order to provide adequate protections. There needs to be provisions such that when there is ground disturbing activities, there will be tribal monitors present to help identify any discoveries and to identify the proper way to address those discoveries. That is something which we believe the developer is on board with. And also there needs to be in advance an agreement as to what are the protocols if you discover something. That way, project doesn't have to stop and be bogged down while people figure out what to do, that there will be agreed upon in advance specific protocols in place. Those are broader issues. And my colleague Holly Robertson has a couple of comments on specific modifications to the existing mitigation measures. And we can certainly be happy, would be certainly to write and provide these in writing to the commission, to the city, and would recommend certainly that that is a basis for further consultation. But my, see, my colleague will just address some of the specifics.
Hello, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you for the question. May I have your name, please, just so we can follow up?
Harry Stewart.
Harry Stewart? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. So the Koi Nation has some concerns that have been shared previously and they're, they're really consistent and they're, they're specific to this project site, which is a very culturally sensitive site because of, and you see this in your comment, letters from the Autobahn Society and the Sierra Club as well. This area near Burns Valley Creek is very culturally significant because it's, it's a wonderful place to live, right? That's why Danco wants to build housing there, which we respect. That's why tribes used to live there too. So it's, because this area is very culturally sensitive, we recommend enhanced mitigation measures to make sure that once the project is moving, it can keep moving and moving forward in a, in a practical way. And so all of these mitigation measures, they're designed, I'm going to answer your question, I'm just giving you context. They're designed to both have tribes there so that they can protect the tribal cultural resources in real time, but also so it's practical for the developer and the city to keep the project moving smoothly once construction starts. So if you'll allow me, I'll gladly go through the mitigation measures one at a time and say how they would need to be revised. Is that okay? Would you like me to do that now?
I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to do that. So, and again, we will follow up with you because I'm doing this in real time here. So I do explicitly reserve the right to follow up with you by a letter so I can be more specific and clear in a letter, but I'll just do my best to answer your question now. So TCR mitigation measure one, it's a, it's a requirement to designate a project reburial area in advance of ground disturbing activities. So we would request that that would be designate a project reburial area by mutual agreement, mutual written agreement. So the tribe, the developer and the lead agency prior to project approval. And, and the reason is twofold. One, very practical for, in my opinion, and hi, Chris, good to see you. For Danco, they need to know where the project reburial area is so they can plan around it because the reburial area is where you move all the most sensitive things you find during construction and they can't be disturbed afterward. So you need to make sure that reburial area goes in a place that makes sense for the project where they're not going to need to put pipes later, for example. So you want to designate that prior to project approval so people have a plan around it.
Quick question. The reburial area would be for any human remains or other objects found on the site as well?
We would ask that they would be for any tribal cultural resource, which would include both human remains and, for example, pottery shards or arrowheads, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm just looking at the second sentence here. And then in the second sentence where it says the reburial area shall be in a mutually agreed upon location with the consulting tribe in an area not subject to further disturbance and capped after ground disturbance is complete. The reason we strongly suggest having a tribal cultural resources treatment protocol is that it has the nuances of this information in it. But so specifically how we would ask that this be changed is where it says and capped. It would be and capped in a culturally appropriate manner. The reason being that the type of cap, that could be anywhere from gravel to concrete to metal, depends on what is buried under there, right? And so, for example, if you have human remains, you need a different kind of cap than if you are just reburying arrowheads because arrowheads are rocks, they're not so subject to being crushed. Whereas human remains, the bones are more delicate. So it's, again, this is just so that in your mitigation measures, every, your mitigation measures are the game plan. And so we ask that you have mitigation measures that allow everyone to know what the game plan is ahead of time so you can plan for it and not be hung up in time-consuming debate later where you've got your construction equipment idling. It's very expensive. That's all for one. I'm ready to move on to two unless anyone has follow-up questions on TCR one.
I don't see any. If you'll proceed, please.
Yes, ma'am. So two, and again, you guys are close here, just not all the way, but you're definitely moving in a good direction. So two, requirement for contractors engaged in ground disturbing activities to receive meaningful training on tribal cultural resources, tribal cultural sensitivity and tribal cultural resources one time and prior to the beginning of work from a tribal representative. We would ask that that be changed, just to include two additional words, paid training, which the city typically does and which this tribe provides at a very discounted rate. It's, you know, the rate.
Not runoff, but right, it is a discounted rate.
It's less than $500. From where it says a tribal representative, a consulting tribal representative. And the reason there is that this area is culturally specific to the Koi Nation. And each of these tribes is a separate sovereign nation with their own cultural protocols. And so if no other tribe has consulted here and told you this is their area, and I, I do not speak for any other tribe, if it is culturally significant to another tribe, I, you know, they're invited, of course, to participate in the process. But for Koi, they have specific cultural protocols. So it should be specific to the consulting tribe. That's it for mitigation two. And I would just note where it says requirement for contractors. What we mean by contractors is the personnel of the contractors, the actual people doing the work. So we want to make sure the people doing the work know what they're looking at, know that it's a culturally sensitive area and know how to be respectful. And those, that cultural sensitivity training is not a substitute for tribal monitors. We cannot magically turn a contractor with a one-hour training into a skilled-trained tribal monitor. But it is just to give them an overview so they know who to contact and what kind of thing to look out for. It helps reduce conflict in the field and helps, again, keep the project moving forward smoothly. So I said two words, but actually three. I would say contractor personnel rather than contractors. Because again, we don't want to just train like the project manager who's going to be in an office. We actually want to train the construction workers who will be on site. And where it says prior to the beginning of work, that's great. Typically, what we mean, just so you know, by prior to the beginning of work, that's right before the beginning of work. That's right before the beginning of work, so you you know, you're training the actual personnel for that project. You wouldn't do it months ahead of time because you might then have different people. Um, that concludes TCR two, does anybody have any further questions on that before I move on?
No.
Okay, and thank you so much for giving me the time to do this. Uh, so TCR three. We do not have any comments on the changes to that language. I I do for context, though. Just want to tell you that again, we strongly urge. Adoption and compliance with the tribe's cultural resources mitigation. Protocol, their treatment protocol. Because the Native American Heritage Commission, what these laws do, Health and Safety Code seven fifty point five. And five, I'm not reading this because I assume you all have it in front of you. But would it be helpful if I read the language?
No, we have it in front of us.
Okay, great. So what these do is these refer to the Native American Heritage Commission's most likely descendant process. And compliance with NAGPRA and CAL-NAGPRA, which is what you do specifically if there's Native American human remains. Or or associated grave goods found. That creates a whole. Morass of complex cultural situation. If you discover human remains, which again is part of why we so strongly urge monitoring so that there's. Um, not, so there's somebody on site to deal with it in that event. Um, so although we wouldn't propose to change this language because it just says you'll comply with the law. Um, having an adopted mitigation. Tribal cultural resources treatment protocol. Helps you comply with that law and again, have a game plan ahead of time. Uh, so that concludes three.
Yeah.
Is there anything else folks would ask about three, TCR three?
I don't see any.
Okay. Um, so TCR four. In the event that reburial of TCR onsite is infeasible. The owner and city shall consult with the consulting tribe regarding any removal of tribal cultural soils from the project area. There we disagree. Um, we would ask for a mitigation measure that says tribal cultural soils shall not be removed from the project area. And the reason for that is then you're taking cultural soils from one site. You're moving them to another site and now you have two tribal cultural resources sites. So if the city ever wants to build on the next site. The tribe is now going to be concerned about those relocated tribal cultural resources. The other reason. Is that culture, what do we mean by cultural soil? That often means in places like this that have had ongoing habitation for a long period of time. That's where their ancestors died. That's the the people have been here so long that their their bodies, in some cases not all. Have decomposed enough that their DNA is in the soil. It's it's very clear, you can see it with the naked eye. When you're dealing with what people call middon. It's it's dark oily soil, it's decomposed bodies from ancient times. And so to this to this tribe culturally, and I'm not a member of this tribe, I speak on behalf, on their behalf as their lawyer. So I'm sharing with you what they have told me culturally. Our our greatest expert for this is. Coy Nation tipple Robert Carey, who could not be here tonight, he wanted to be here. But he sends his regrets because there was a contamination release. Over at the Alum Indian Colony, and so he's meeting with EPA tonight about that. It's a serious environmental justice issue affecting the community, so he had to be there for that. But. What he has taught me and given me permission to share is that. The tribe sees those cultural soils as a tribal cultural resource. And so when they're relocated and moved elsewhere, it's very concerning to them and it's ongoing cultural harm. So they don't want us, it's it's not appropriate to move them to a different area. So they just want the cultural soils to stay on site. One of the ways that the tribe tries to work constructively with good companies like Danco and with the city when it's. When it's willing to do so. To make this not be so onerous to the city and also not have so much disturbance. Is identify those areas and have capping, right, or avoidance so that you don't have to move a lot of soils. Or if there has to be soil, they can be moved to the reburial area. Right? And that could be part of the capping of the reburial area. But when you move them to another project site, it's just spreading the the. The problem around, it makes problems for the city later and it's harmful to the tribe. Um. Yeah. So that concludes our comments on mitigation, TCR mitigation measure four. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, and we're happy to provide more information. Um, then. You asked about TCR, but. This mitigation measure merges and in some places cross references. Tribal cultural resources mitigation measures and cultural mitigation measures. Um, so may may I please just very briefly go over the cultural resources mitigation measures because they're they're relevant here?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, so. Cultural Resources Mitigation Measure One, CUL one. So this says subsurface archaeological remains. So what you need is a major, a mitigation measure specific to TCR that deals with the same topic. Cultural resources, archaeological resources and tribal cultural resources are all. Separate areas of SEQA, they're all separate statutes. There's this law called AB fifty two from twenty fourteen that required that there be different. Um, that they be treated as different resources under SEQA. Uh, I had the privilege for the governor's office of writing those SEQA guidelines. Um. So I can tell you they're they're definitely supposed to be distinct, I can tell you that because I got tribes really angry at me. When I worked for the government. Because we didn't separate them enough. So I I feel your pain here, actually, on what happens when you don't keep them separate. And I learned my lesson, so I'm I'm sharing that with you all. Um, but this needs to be specific to one for tribal cultural resources, one for archaeological. Um, the other challenge here is that it says a qualified cultural resources consultant. Right? So they're not necessarily talking about. What a tribal monitor or tribal cultural resources consultant would do. So this might be fine for archaeological resources, but it does not adequately cover this issue for tribal cultural resources. And your tribal cultural resources section doesn't have this topic in it. So that one's a little hard to wordsmith on the fly, but we'd be happy to send you a letter with proposed revised mitigation measures. And we could do so very quickly if you like. Um, because I, you know, we understand there are time sensitivities. Any any questions on that before I go on to number two?
No.
Okay, so number two. Um, this one for the tribe is very problematic. Um, the reason is because it talks about data potential and data recovery. So if you look at the bottom of CUL two. It says it is understood that destructive data testing and or curation of tribal cultural resources is strongly opposed. By the consulting tribe and should be avoided. We appreciate that that language is there, but I want to make our position very clear. There should be no data testing, no destructive data testing and no curation of tribal cultural resources. That is culturally anathema to the Coy Nation. They need to be reburied. So to have this mitigation measure that talks about. If data potential exists, there's an intact feature, it may be necessary to do data recovery. That is all in very strong contrast to this last sentence where the city acknowledges. That this is strongly opposed by the tribe. So. It just, you're gonna have a problem if you're doing data recovery in the field. Um, it it's very culturally inappropriate. It's also not in line with current best practices for archaeology. Um, in the past, archaeologists would often dig things up and curate them. I actually do quite a bit of work for NAGPRA repatriation, so that's the Native American. Protection Grave Protection and Repatriation Act. And the law, there's a new federal law that's going into place January twelfth. That gives all the all the agencies a five years to repatriate. Um, and there's already a California law, CAL-NAGPRA, that that has short timelines for repatriation. So what that means on a practical level. Is that where would you curate? Because typically, curation, it's going into a museum, right, or a university. I'm not speaking for all universities here, but the ones I work with are not taking in new items. And so it's a it's a very impractical mitigation measure to say, well, we'll curate it. Because who's going to take it to curate it when they're under a state and federal obligation to repatriate it? And so the simpler thing to do for everybody and the more culturally appropriate thing is just don't dig it up in the first place. Or if you have to dig it up, which this tribe understands sometimes that has to happen. Rebury it onsite. Right? And if for some reason that couldn't happen, the culturally appropriate thing would be to repatriate, i.e. give it back to the tribe. Is not appropriate to dig up cultural resources or human remains and stick them in a museum. That is, that is not okay with this tribe and it's increasingly not okay under state and federal law. Um, so that would be our position on mitigation measure two. Uh. We have worked successfully with Danco and we have worked, we being Coy Nation. And we have worked successfully with Dr. White recently. On coming up with a tribal cultural resources treatment protocol. And I know I'm sounding like a broken record here, but this is our best solution is to have that agreement that says what to do. Um. We are not saying there should never be data recovery. But we're saying you gotta talk to the tribe about it and do it in a culturally sensitive way. And they're strongly opposed to destructive data recovery. Let me give you a concrete example of what destructive data testing means. Because that sounds kind of. Kind of wonky and abstract. Um, that means you've got a human skull and you want to know how old it is. So you break out a tooth and you pulverize it and you dissolve it in acid to do carbon data. Dating. That's what destructive data recovery is, that's an example of it. And once. Things are destroyed through destructive data testing, they can never be repaired. And so what this mitigation measure says to the tribe. Is that the city values. Si, you know, the archaeological value. Over their cultural value. And the tribe does not feel that way. For archaeological resources which are not. Tribal cultural resources. That could be, say, you know, a cabin from the Gold Rush era or something. There are sometimes things that are archaeological that are not tribal, that's your business. We we have no opinion on that. You can do whatever you want with it. But we just ask to have a say in what is considered archaeological versus cultural, tribal cultural resource. And to treat the tribal cultural resources in culturally sensitive way, please. Does anyone have questions on number two?
Let me see, I may or may not be following you, but what you're essentially saying is on the last line of of the CUL two. As strongly opposed and should be avoided, you want to say should not be allowed, is that essentially what you're saying?
We would like it to say is not allowed. And. That sort of calls into question what the utility is of the remainder of the of the above paragraph.
Well, that's not fair, that's entirely, but I just wanted to understand if that was essentially what you were asking.
We would like there to be no destructive data testing and no curation of tribal cultural resources.
Is. Can anybody explain to me what kind of destructive cultural activity we could be. Having to do with this project, is that going to come up next?
Sure, yeah, that's a really good question.
Like the developer to be able to answer some of these things.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He's frozen, nope, there he is.
I mean, I'm not sure what the developer is going to address on this, I mean, this is extremely speculative what's being shared here, so. Um, you know, if, um, I know. Most of you reviewed the um. Cultural study that was done and so you're aware of of what was found on the site, there's going to be no impacts to that area. And then there were two or three other isolated finds which do not qualify for the register, so I mean. You know, we we've. If you want to keep going down this, we can certainly do it, I mean, none of these are new points, we've been through them on project after project after project. Um, we just disagree that um. The law requires this, that's why the city hasn't signed the protocols that tribe has been asking for is because it gives them authority to make decisions. That otherwise is the cities as a lead agency. We don't believe it's prudent to give that authority away. Um, and so, you know, the. We could address any of the specifics that you would like to have been brought up here. Uh, we just don't believe it makes sense to remove um options. Um, in the event that there is some inadvertent discovery in the future. That's why we added language, understanding that the Coy Nation in particular is opposed to this particular type of thing. But all this talk of middon, um, human remains, all that, there's no evidence of this. The 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 site that was identified here was described as a. Episodic tool making and repair location, not even any evidence of. Um, you know, a village or a campsite or something like that, so I just want to give that context and. You know, once the public hearings close, we're prepared to provide some detailed response on. Um, other comments in the letter, but.
Thank you, Ms. Roberson.
Would you like me to respond to that or go through the rest of the mitigation measures?
They, pardon me, they have and um. I'm curious, um. Are there more concerns that you have?
Yes, sir.
Would you care to detail those, please?
Yes, thank you. So fundamentally, the analysis of tribal cultural resources done for this project. The the city does not agree with this, the tribe, excuse me, the tribe does not agree. With the city's archaeologist's assessment of the sensitivity of the project site. So that is the fundamental difference here. Um, your archaeologist, Dr. White, has acknowledged the tribes are the expert in tribal cultural resources. That he's an archaeological expert only. And so this the tribe's assessment of the sensitivity of the site is that. Is very likely that you will encounter previously undisturbed tribal cultural resources when you're digging. And in part, and to its credit. Danko has already somewhat redesigned the project and we thank Danko for that. To avoid the areas that we know are the most sensitive. The difference is. The tribe is saying this area is important enough and tribal cultural resources are important enough. And there's enough evidence, substantial evidence. Provided by the cultural expert, Mr. Gary, and provided in consultation. That when you keep digging, you'll find more. And so what we're asking is that the mitigation measures be strengthened. So that when you keep digging, if you find more, there's a plan in place. And what I hear Mr. Flora saying and what I understand the city's position is through their archaeological report. Is that they have, they have determined, well, ultimately it's up to you and the city council is decision makers, but the staff recommendation. Is that. They think they've done enough and that there's not enough evidence. That requires being extra careful. That that they've done enough to to do some avoidance, which we appreciate some avoidance. But that the additional evidence doesn't say. That it warrants being careful. And and that is where we fundamentally disagree very strongly. And so what I'm trying to do is explain. How these mitigation measures can be strengthened so that the tribe's concerns are met so that so that this project can move forward. So that you can build housing here in a sensitive site, but do it in a way that is respectful and careful enough. So I believe I left. So I believe I left off on number, number two. The big thing that's missing, there is no mitigation measure. Actually, nope, it's number six, so I'll get there. Number three. So number three is about what to do if human remains are encountered. This just says to follow the existing law, so we don't have any problem with that, except that we would ask you to, you know, again, agree to a cultural resources monitoring protocol and treatment protocol. And we'd be happy to provide you a copy of that. That's been provided to the city before Mr. Flora asserted that takes decision-making authority away from the city. I don't think that it does. And that's not what we're trying to do. We just want to be able to say when something's culturally important to the tribe and how to treat it. Right? And we'd be happy to engage with the city, maybe with an ad hoc committee of the planning commissioner, whomever you like. You know, if if that's the real concern is about power and control, how can that be addressed through a better agreement that works for everybody? Otherwise, we we just come here and have this conversation. So that's number three. For number four. On or prior to the first day of construction, the owner shall organize cultural resource sensitivity training for contractors involved in ground disturbing activities. Again, if the, there's a difference between archaeological, cultural and tribal cultural resources. So to the extent that these are not tribal cultural resources, this is, this mitigation measure is your business. That's not our lane. But we would ask that the 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 tribal cultural sensitivity training is revised as as recommended for the TCR section. Five, the shaded area of the southern portion of the subdivision map shall be a non-buildable area where no construction is allowed. That shall be identified on the parcel map and titled. That's great. That's wonderful. We really appreciate that. Again, this is, this is what I talked about, where we made some progress in consultation and with Danko and saying, okay, where's the area most sensitive? But the difference is, the rest of the area is also sensitive. It doesn't, just because there's a heat map and one area is DEFCON eleven, doesn't mean the other areas are DEFCON zero. Right? Usually the areas around them are also sensitive. So that takes me to number six. And this is, this is where you could save the city a lot of time and money by being a little more flexible here. So this is requirement for tribal monitoring during ground disturbing activities in sensitive areas of the project area. As specifically identified in a confidential map on file with the city. So here, we would urge you to make this a tribal cultural resources measure, not a cultural resources measure, since it's about tribal monitoring. The tribal monitors are experts. They receive a lot of training. They're they're cultural people who engage in cultural activities with the tribe. Some of them are people who make regalia, for example, so they know what it looks like when they find it in the ground. It should be tribal monitoring from the consulting tribe. Again, that's because that this is their area and they have the cultural expertise for these specific resources in these this place. So it's not just monitoring for many tribe, it's this tribe. Our position is that tribal monitoring should be paid because that is they're bringing significant expertise. And everyone else on the project site is paid, so it's fair. The Coy Nation has in the past and continues to offer a discounted flat rate to the city for tribal monitoring that is significantly lower than the private sector rate. Because we understand you're a you're a city without a ton of resources. If the city wants to ask for that rate with this project, I can't commit to it, but it's something you could ask for. The big thing here is the city currently just wants this in a in an identified area where the city's archaeologist has said is the most sensitive site. And the tribe would like tribal monitoring on the whole project site because of the additional places that have been found to have tribal cultural resources. Those are indicators. That's your early red flag warning that says there'll be more here. And the city's archaeologist and Mr. Flora have classified those. It's sort of just, they don't meet the historic register criteria, and so there's no monitoring is warranted. That, you know, that's for your legal counsel to advise you, not for me to advise you on. But from a cultural perspective, Coy Nation's request is that there's monitoring for the whole project site. Instead, what this says is the tribe may provide spot check monitoring or voluntary monitoring at no costs in other areas of the project with prior coordination and approval of the owner. That is very vague, and that is not something Coy Nation is willing to do. It also says that it shall comply with the City of Clear Lake's tribal monitoring policy. That is under review by tribal council, but that is not something that Coy Nation has agreed to with the city. I I also want to proactively just let, make sure you as members of the planning commission know. The Coy Nation does not ask for tribal monitoring on all of every project site. Upon request, we'd be happy to provide you a list of projects with the city in the past couple of years where we have not asked for tribal monitoring. It is not an automatic thing. It is only, honestly, our monitors want to be in the field where it makes a difference. And so we're only trying to monitor in places that are really sensitive. We don't want to be on every project just watching dirt get moved. We only want to be in the culturally significant places. And this is one of them because of the proximity to Burns Valley, because of the creek, because of the other topics that we've talked about today. So thank you so much for your time. And I'm happy to to meet with you or set up meetings with the tribe or engage in consultation or send you a follow-up letter or whatever would be useful to you.
All right. Thank you for your time, Ms. Roberson. We appreciate it. Okay. Before I close public comment, do any commissioners have any more questions of the our builder representative or our tribal representatives? Okay, seeing none.
At this time, I'm going to ask staff if they have any additional information to provide. I believe Andrew has a report for us.
Yes, I do. So I've prepared copies of this report, and I won't read the whole thing because I think a lot of it's been covered. The, I do want to just go through some of the cultural resource investigation done by Dr. White, a summary of that, the AB fifty-two consultation and the previous secret review that was done. So as you're aware, the cultural resource investigation was done by Dr. White of Subterra Heritage Resource Investigations. Done in compliance with the city's Native American tribal consultation program. Under the city's provisions, COE's traditional tribal territory and consultation authority extends to the city boundaries south of Burns Valley containing the project area. As part of the investigation, Dr. White undertook the following tasks. First, an archival document review of records housed at the Northwest Information Center of the California Historical Resources Information System at Sonoma State University. Second, an ethnographic and historical records investigation of the project area. Three, coordination with the potentially effective affected Native American tribe. Four, systematic archaeological survey of the proposed project area. Five, documentation of the affected cultural resources. And six, evaluation of integrity, California Register eligibility and project effects for all the potentially affected cultural resources. So between January and February of twenty twenty-three, the tribal coordination for the project followed three phases. The initial coordination in January twenty twenty-three, Dr. White coordinated with the Coy Nation representatives. Dr. White addressed potential resources of concern to the tribe, including possible archaeological and non-archaeological traditional cultural properties. Dr. White also agreed to an investigation strategy incorporating backhoe probes. Coordination also involved arrangements for tribal participation in field work for this investigation and discussion of principles involving tribal review of findings and recommendations appearing in the report. So then went into field participation. There was a surface reconnaissance of the project area conducted by Dr. White in conjunction with the trench probe excavations. The entire project area was covered by survey using an intensive strategy consisting of pedestrian transect sweeps, meaning walking the entire site between three and six meters apart. Coy representatives, Ms. Yolanda Sanchez and Jonathan Costias joined Dr. White and participated in both days of field investigation. A backhoe was then used to excavate thirty trench probes in the project area. Dr. White stationed near the trench observed while the two coy representatives also observed. And a third, another staff person from Dr. White's company was there inspecting. And looking through the spoil piles, sidewall, profile observations were completed for each trench and mapped. The coy monitors were directly engaged in the identification and boundary determination for two newly discovered sites. I'll call it O one, CR O one, historic depression area habitation site and CR O two, a prehistoric tribal cultural resource. So then, based on the research that filled work, there were some findings and recommendations done by Dr. White. The report documented the newly discovered sites and five isolated finds, including three tribal cultural resource-isolated obsidian flakes and two historic era items. The five isolated finds in the historic era resource, CR O one, were determined by Dr. White to not be eligible for the California Register of Historic Resources. As a result, no mitigation or protections were recommended for these sites finds. As to CR O two, Dr. White determined that the site is potentially eligible for the California Register of Historic Resources. The coy consultants expressed a strong interest in the preservation of the site and expressed a gratitude and reverence toward the record of tribal heritage represented by the site. As a result, the report recommended that the project be designed so as to avoid and provide a buffer of thirty-five feet on all sides of CR O two, such that no ground disturbance would occur in that area. So just, that means in that area where the site was discovered, documented, nothing would be disturbed. And there'd also be a thirty-five foot buffer around it where there'd be no disturbance. On March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, a final draft of Dr. White's report was submitted to the COE for review of the results and recommendations. On March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the COE's Cultural Resources Director and Tribal Historic Preservation Officer responded with comments concurring with the proposed no build buffer for CR O two. The AB fifty-two consultation, which is, was referenced, that's a formal consultation required by law. The the city sent a formal notification to Coy Nation and Habimnitol Pomo, letting them know that they had an opportunity to consult on this project that was done on December nineteenth and twentieth. Tribes then had thirty days to respond to request consultation. On January ninth, the city received a consultation request from Pomo. The parties agreed to postpone the consultation until Dr. White finished his report. Thereafter, there were consultations on April sixth, twenty twenty-three and July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Those were in-person consultations. Then communications continued after that. And a result of those consultations and to address tribal concerns, Dr. White prepared a revised report dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And although the city met in good faith and with reasonable effort, it was ultimately unable to reach a mutual agreement regarding further avoidance and or mitigation measures for the project. So on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city sent a letter concluding formal tribal consultation without agreement and acknowledging that tribal coordination separate from consultation would continue. Now, the, as was mentioned, Coy Nation submitted a letter December fifth, twenty twenty-three on this MND and some of those concerned, they relayed four concerns, primary concerns with the sequel process here. Some of those were relayed during this hearing tonight. The the primary concerns were, I'll just go through all the four, the four main ones, that first, the MND does not adequately address concerns and impacts to TCR. Second, that the mitigation measures have been adopted, that have been adopted are inadequate. Third, that the MND does not adequately analyze cumulative impacts on TCR. And four, that the city must engage in continued consultation with the COE. Now, as to the first point that the MND does not adequately address impacts to TCR, as we went through the report there from Dr. White, there were no sites that were already listed or deemed eligible. There was one site that was up for the California Historic Register. There's one site that was potentially eligible and that site has been, the project's been designed to create a buffer around it, no impacts to it. Because none of those, there's nothing else on the site that is already eligible or listed, it then becomes something that is up to the discretion of the lead agency, which is the city, to determine whether other, the resources on the site based on the criteria of historical resources, what qualifies for historical resources, could be a tribal cultural resource. Now, it is important to note that in making that determination, the lead agency, the lead agency, you, the decision makers, shall consider the significance of the resources to a California Native American tribe. So when you use your discretion to determine whether resources on the project site actually are tribal cultural resources, you look at what qualifies as a historical resource under the statute. That's what Dr. White did. He looked at criteria for historical resources, determined they did not qualify historical as historical resources. And then you, using that information and considering what the tribe has provided, use your discretion to decide whether the resources qualify as tribal cultural resources. Now, in the letter from December fifth, Coy Nation provides a number of items, they reference a number of items, and there are also documents that were confidential submitted to the city. Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review all of that and form its opinions on it. Its staff, city staff's opinion, after full consideration of all evidence and the significance of the resource to the tribe in accordance and in accordance with the findings of Dr. White's expert report, that there's not substantial evidence to conclude that other items, sites or landscapes in the project site beyond the site that will be fully avoided are eligible for inclusion in the Historic Register and therefore are not considered TCR under the statute. Thus, there are no potential TCR that will be impacted other than the one site that will be fully avoided. Nevertheless, as discussed below in this report and as already referenced, extensive mitigation measures have been proposed to ensure that in the unlikely event unknown TCR is discovered during the project development, the impacts will be less than significant. Representatives from Coy Nation tight said that their concern is that there's not enough, they believe that there's not enough evidence that the city needs to be extra careful or the city's not being careful enough. You've seen the mitigation measures. There there are extensive mitigation measures in here, including monitoring that was pointed out of the site. There are protocols to be followed. So there are many measures in place to be protective of tribal cultural resources. As to the cumulative impacts, staff's opinion is because there are no eligible TCR on the site and there's not substantial evidence of such, there won't be any cumulative impacts based on other projects going on in the city. And then as to whether the further tribal consultation is warranted, there's no legal requirement for further consultation. The tribal consultation process ends when one party use, after good faith efforts determines that no agreement can be reached. That's what happened here. So consultation legally ended. legally ended. Of course, the city can continue to coordinate as needed, because there will be some coordination based on the mitigation that's in place. Now, one other thing I want to raise is the, this was raised in the earlier, the staff report, there was a previous SEQA document done for this project. In two thousand and six, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. And based on SEQA, subsequent review of a project that's already been reviewed and approved is limited to what can occur. So this is Public Resources Code Section two-one-one, two-one-one-six-six, says that when you have already done your SEQA review, no further SEQA review can occur, no further EIR or mitigated neg, negative declaration can occur unless there are substantial changes to the project that would require major revisions to the previous MND. Or if there were substantial changes in the circumstances that would require major revisions to the previous MND, or new information which was not known and could not have been known at the time of the previous MND becomes available. Here, a, an MND has been prepared out of an abundance of caution, but it, but an alternative direction and finding that is, that the commission can make is that it is appropriate to proceed under SEQA's subsequent review standards because the two thousand and six MND was adopted. And there have been no project changes proposed that will require major revisions of the two thousand and six MND. There's only minor changes to, I'll go through, I believe, the original required curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements on old, old Highway fifty-three, some improvements to a bridge on Highway fifty-three, and forty feet of setback from the waterway. Now, there's no curb, gutter, sidewalk on Highway fifty-three, no improvements to the bridge, and there's a fifty-foot setback. So based on those changes, there's actually fewer ground disturbances going to occur, and it's more protective of the environment. So again, I'll go back, the findings of, are required under two-one-one-six, two-one-one-six-six would be that there are no project changes being proposed that will require major revisions of the two thousand and six MND. There's no substantial changes in circumstances that will require major revisions of the two thousand and six MND, and I would state that the, the land, the environment, the surroundings are the same, the circumstances are by and large, the same. And third, there's no new information that was unknown and unable to be known at the time of the two thousand and six MND. Here, again, the land is the same, the potential for TCR has not changed on the site. Anything that is known now could have been known in two thousand and six when it was adopted. So there are no needs to make, there's no need to make changes or additions to the two thousand and six MND. And in-depth review of the project and its impacts already occurred at that time. Time for challenging the original SEQA document is over, and all impacts were previously analyzed. So those are alternative findings you can make in addition to adopting the MND, is that you can make findings that no further SEQA or review is warranted based under two-one-one-six-six. And again, I would remind you, in terms of TCR, whether there's TCR on the site, that is the decision-maker's discretion, and it's something to be based on consideration of what you have in the record, the evidence you've seen, the confidential information you've seen, and evaluating the significance of the resources to the tribe. All of that should be part of your decision-making process. So I'm happy to answer further questions if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Not sure if this is, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate person tuned to ask. I had a couple of things I wanted to revisit back with Ms. Sally. It raised the issue of untreated runoff, and it got touched on just for ten seconds by the project engineer, but it, it sounded as if he was saying that was going to be treated, and it runoff would be treated. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and Ms. Roberson raised the point about the reburial to be agreed upon first, and it seems as if that was answered in some kind of mitigation, if it says either will be mutually agreed upon or agreed to be agreed upon essentially. Is that where we are on that? Okay, so that was answered. Okay. I thought that was an issue. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions before we call for a vote? No, at this time. Okay. I will take a motion on item number one.
I move that we vote on the item on the agenda.
Can you?
Item number, okay.
Read it by name, please.
I will certainly. Which one of my notes has that? Thank you. I would like to consider the project, the subdivision development, SD twenty-two oh one, described as accessory parcel number zero-one-zero-zero-four-eight dash zero-eight.
Do I have a second?
A second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Smalley.
Aye.
Commissioner Inglis.
Aye.
Commissioner Coker.
Aye.
Vice Chair Stewart.
Aye.
Chair Williams.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-three dash zero seven has been adopted. Okay, I will now move on to City Manager, Menu Development Director, Staff, Commission, and Reports.
City Manager Flora or Planner Roberts, do we have any reports?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Smalley, any reports?
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Coker.
I have nothing.
Inglis?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Stewart?
I have nothing.
Neither do I. Do any commissioners have a request for future agenda items? Okay, okay. Thank you to everyone who took time to attend and/or submit their comments, and to those who are watching our meeting via Zoom and YouTube. There being no further business of the commission, we are now adjourned at six thirty-five PM on Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.